Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to our August 14, 2014 meeting. Ms. Weathers, would you call the role for us?
Ms. Heinz.
Here.
Mr. Minnigan.
Here.
Mr. Darman.
Here.
Mr. Lue.
Here.
Mr. Bierl. Ms. Tipton. Here. Mr. Jeter.
Here.
Ms. Seeley.
Here.
Ms. Smollett.
Present.
Mr. Beck. Mr. Weller. Mr. Panks. Mr. O'Hara.
Here.
Mr. Alfred.
Here.
Ms. Bellisario.
Here.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alfred is now going to lead us in the invocation and pledge.
Let everybody bow their heads. Dear Heaven and Father, we would like to say thank you. Thank you for a safe opening of all of our schools. And also, we ask for a special blessing tonight. That we pray for a productive 2014-2015 school year. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Pledge allegiance.
To the light of the United States of America and the super republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Alfred. Recognition of visitors. Does anyone have anyone they'd like to recognize? We have a few scouts out in the audience this evening, Boy Scouts. Would y'all stand and be recognized, please? Thank you for being with us this evening. All right, special recognitions. The first is, I'm going to call on Superintendent Foles, Press Club of New Orleans Awards and Telly Awards for our Department of Public Information and Channel 13.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. I just asked both the Boy Scouts, guys, if they want to turn an air conditioner fan so we can...
Help us fix our air conditioners tonight, but we do apologize for that. But I think we've got some maintenance guys out there working on it. We've got one unit working and trying to get the second one up. But tonight, Ms. Heinz and board members, I'm honored to share with you our most recent Communications and Media Awards. And I'm happy to tell you, for the seventh year in a row at the Press Club of New Orleans, we have received the Excellence in Journalism Banquet Award. Our own Channel 13, as well as our Communication Department, brought home big awards again. I'd like to start first with our Communication Department and ask Meredith Mendez and Angela Davidson to come forward and tell you that they earned first place for our Public Relations Social Media category. So Angela and Meredith, come on up. You're Angela.
Yes.
And I heard you're Meredith.
Some days.
Thank you. All right, let's see what else we've got here. Also, Angela won first place in the category of Public Relations Photography for the Covington Learning Community DVD Jacket to cover for it. And Angela, we have an award for you for that.
My goodness.
That's it, right there. And I thank Angela's mom. I saw Janice come in, former principal. Thank you for being here. Meredith and Angela, again, for their Public Relations Electronic Newsletter, the Trey's Team Talk that we send out weekly. And then Angela for the Public Relations Graphics and Animation on her wonderful work with her PowerPoints. All of you have seen her PowerPoints, and she does a great job with that. Channel 13 also won many awards. First off, in the category of video editing, happy to tell you that Kevin Muffrey took first place on his video, if you remember, on Swim Coach, that passed away, Coach Ed Kelly from North Shore High, in that video, won first place. And Kevin, come on up and say that. And I asked Kevin to tell you his role that he plays with the Press Club, it's a nice honor. Tell him what your position is.
For the second year in a row, I've been elected as president of the Press Club of New Orleans and represents all of the media outlets across the New Orleans region, so...
In the category of general news videography, John Harrison won first place for his Student of the Year piece, if you remember, by Ula Combs, Anthony Dumas. John, come up and receive your award. Channel 13 also won a third-place award for the Salmon Girls Basketball Championship Video. A second place went to David Williams and Rhett Sharp for the Covington High Bell Tower Dedication Video. And we can see Channel 13, our Communication Department, working together even more and more. Melody Swain and Meredith Mendez had a second place for their writing on our Social Networking Safety Video that basically has gone across, started in the state and is being told it's being shown all across the country. We did very well, and we compete against major TV stations and PR agencies in New Orleans. Two other awards that were a joint effort I want to announce to you tonight. We won two Telly Awards, one for our social networking video, which is the work of Meredith, Melody, and Kevin Muffrey. So I want them to step forward to get their Telly Awards.
Telly, go ahead and go.
These things are really heavy, so they're really nice. Thank you.
All right. Big time, Telly.
And a second Telly goes to Meredith, Melody, Kevin, Angela for the Covington Learning Community Video. So Angela, come on up and grab this as well. The Telly Award-winning videos compete against media like CNN, ESPN, and the Discovery Channel. So these are awards that are on a national level. Also happy to tell you, we had another national award, went to Meredith and Angela, came from the National Public School Relations Association. They won an Award of Excellence, which is the highest achievement in that association, for the Covington Learning Community publication. Come up and let me present that to y'all, and thank you for your efforts on that. And I just want to thank both Melody and Meredith for their leadership in those departments. You know, we talk about community connections, we talk about spreading the word, we talk about working together. All those go together, the community connections that Kevin makes as well. So I just want to thank them for their efforts each and every day. And I can tell you, more and more places I go, people are talking about what they saw in our videos, whether it be on YouTube, whether it be on Channel 13, whether it be from our social media. So it's the wave of the future, and I think we've been on the front end of that. And I think because of that, our school system has certainly garnered a lot of publicity. So I thank all of them for their efforts for that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Foles, and congratulations to all of you. I see many more awards in our future, and we really appreciate your hard work and dedication. Thank you. Item two is attendance awareness. We have remarks from Ms. Cheryl Araby, our Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening. As we begin our 2014-2015 school year, we really want to encourage our students and remind our parents, as well as our teachers and administrators, the importance of our students getting to school. We know that when that student is at school, that they are getting the instruction that they need, they're also getting the care that they need in our schoolhouses. So tonight, we'd like to ask Ms. Mary Kay Bellisario to read a resolution which will encourage all of our students to get to school.
Thank you. Whereas children are the top priority for the St. Tammany Parish School Board, and educators earnestly work to ensure students grow into educated, responsible, and caring lifelong learners. And whereas a student's attendance in school can be directly tied to success in the classroom, and whereas students who attend school regularly are more likely to graduate from high school, find gainful employment, and typically earn at least 50% more than students who drop out of school. And whereas the state of Louisiana believes education is critically important and is dedicated to ensuring students receive as much classroom instruction as possible, and whereas parents need to encourage their children to attend school every day, whereas students who habitually miss school are more likely to drop out of school, and three-quarters of the people incarcerated in this country are high school dropouts. And whereas truant behavior negatively impacts the entire community through a variety of ways, now therefore it be resolved that the St. Tammany Parish School Board does hereby proclaim the importance of attendance awareness and ask all educators, parents, and students to support efforts to promote daily student attendance. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the official minutes of this board, with copies being sent to each school and office site to be posted as a sign that school attendance should be a priority for everyone. I so move.
We have a motion by Ms. Bellisario. We have a unanimous second by the rest of the board. Do we have any comments from the board members? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Thank you very much, Ms. Bellisario and Ms. Araby. We'll move on to public comments. We did not have anyone sign up for five minutes or three minutes, so we'll move on to our agenda items. First is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held on July 17, 2014. Do we have a motion to accept those minutes? A motion by Mr. Womack, a second by Mr. Pancks. Do we have any comments from board members? Any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Item B is approval of the minutes from the special meeting held on July 24, 2014. Do we have a motion to accept those minutes? Motion by Mr. Bentoncourt, a second by Ms. Smollett. Do we have any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Item C is appropriate retirement resolutions for the following certificated personnel subsequent to July 17, 2014. Tessa L. Heiss, Abney Elementary, 20.49 years, 14 years in St. Tammany Parish. Nancy M. Shambless, Chateaume Elementary, eight years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Peggy B. Rushing, Fifth Ward Junior High, 18.50 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Karen S. Pearson, Folsom Elementary, 32.96 years, 23.51 years in St. Tammany Parish. Julie H. Mate, Harrison Curriculum Center, 33 years, 10 years in St. Tammany Parish. Susan S. Zibinko, Lee Road Junior High, 22 years, 13 years in St. Tammany Parish. Peggy A. Skamimi, Magnolia Trace Elementary, 34 years, 24 years in St. Tammany Parish. Cuba F. Mangus, Pineview Middle, 23 years, six years in St. Tammany Parish. Bradley O. Guth, Salmon High, 19.90 years, seven in St. Tammany Parish. Do we have a motion to accept these retirement resolutions? Ms. Seeley has moved on the motion. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Pancks. Do we have any comments from board members? Any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Item D is appropriate retirement resolutions for the following non-certificated personnel subsequent to July 17, 2014. Sherri A. Jenkins, Lee Road Junior High, 24.99 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Virginia B. Davis, Transportation Center, 9.69 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Do we have a motion to accept these retirement resolutions for non-certificated personnel? Motion by Mr. Womack, a second by Mr. Lue. Do we have any comments from board members? Any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Item E is announcement of the Assistant Principal at Little Oak Middle School. Mr. Foles.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. Board members, happy to introduce to you tonight the new Assistant Principal at Little Oak Middle School, Mike Van De Vell.
Ms. Heinz, board members, Mr. Foles, Ms. Araby, Mr. Jabia, and Central Office Personnel, I thank you guys for this opportunity to be a part of the Little Oak Learning Community. I'd like to thank Mr. Oofnak and Ms. Forrest, as they allowed me to pursue the dream to become an administrator. And also would like to thank my wife, Carly, for the opportunity as well. So I look forward to it, and I thank you guys very much.
Congratulations, I believe. Ms. Bellisario has a presentation for you.
On behalf of District 15, and especially Little Oak, and my fellow board members and our superintendent and his staff, we want to congratulate you on your appointment. And with the new theme this year of moving forward, we thought schools cannot do it alone might be of use. I'm sure in the next couple of days, you can get that finished.
We'll get it done this weekend.
Sure.
Item F is announcement of Assistant Principal at Pineview Middle School. Mr. Foles.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. Board members, happy to introduce to you tonight the new Assistant Principal at Pineview Middle, Mr. Devon Bell.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I would like to thank Superintendent Trey Foles, Assistant Superintendent Cheryl Araby, and Peter Jabia, and the board members. I would also like to take this time to thank my family, mother, father, Donald Bell, Patricia Bell, for shaping me into the person that I am today and making me... Oh, give me a second. And making me a decent human being. I pledge to give the same effort and display the same integrity that has allowed me to receive this honor and... Sorry about that. While doing my part and continue to make Pineview Middle School an excellent place for kids to receive an education. Finally, I would like to thank my big brothers, Patrick and Damian Bell, for giving me guidance as a youth and still to this day, and numerous amounts of administrators and colleagues that have helped me along my way in my educational career. Thank y'all very much. Y'all have a good one.
Thank you. And Mr. Bell? Mr. Darman has a presentation for you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations on your appointment. As Ms. Bellisario said, schools can't do it alone. So that's why we got you here.
All right.
So go ahead to Pineview and do your job, and we appreciate you, man, and know you'd do great. But give us a book report on that, soon.
That's two papers for me to write.
That's it. Congratulate.
Thank you very much.
You gotta get two foot foot in the guy.
Thank you very much, sir.
All right, we'll move on to item G now, which is approval of the recommendations from the Committee as a whole meeting for Business Affairs Administrative held on August 7, 2014. Mr. Darman, calling on you for that report.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. We have quite a few recommendations tonight. First recommends adoption of the resolution by the St. Tammany Parish School Board for the Minimum Foundation Program Litigation for the Fiscal Year 2012-2013.
All right, do I have a motion to accept that? A motion by Mr. Lue, a second by Mr. Pancks. Do we have any comments from board members? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Thank you. Second recommends adoption of resolution by the St. Tammany Parish School Board for the Minimum Foundation Program Litigation for the Fiscal Year 2013-14.
I have a motion by Mr. Lue, a second by Mr. Alfred. Do we have any comments from board members? Any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Third recommends acceptance of the contingency agreement and power of attorney for the Minimum Foundation Program Litigation for the Fiscal Year 2013-14.
I have a motion by Ms. Smollett, a second by Ms. Seeley. Do we have any comments from board members? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Fourth recommends acceptance of the Justice Cooperative of Louisiana or DCL Agreement Renewal.
I have a motion by Ms. Bellisario to accept that, a second by Mr. Jeter. Do we have any comments from board members to renew this? I'd just like to comment that it's a very minimal cost to the school system, and we think we gain a lot from being a member of this organization. Any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Fifth recommends acceptance of the policy relative to Act 853 of the 2014 Legislative Session as amended.
I have a motion by, was that Mr. Womack, to accept the policy relative to Act 853? And Mr. Jeter, was that a second from you?
Yeah.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from board members, Ms. Bellisario?
Thank you. I couldn't be here last week, and I think I know I would, and perhaps the public would like just a little explanation of what Act 853 is, if you could give it to us.
Mr. Foles, would you like to do that?
Sure, I'd be glad to. Act 853 was passed in this past legislative session, and the wording in that act said that if you had a student that was attending a D or F school in another district, and that they had to the right or the opportunity to come into our school system as long as they were choosing an A, B, or C school system in our district. And the legislative act was open in many ways, and they basically allowed the local... We believe they allowed the local school districts to define capacity. And it talks about they can only go to schools that have capacity, but they left it open to capacity. What you'll see here tonight is we had defined capacity in our initial draft last Thursday as 80%, if it reaches 80%. And then there was an amendment that was added from board members last Thursday that also said if a school had a modular or portable building on their facility, then that school was deemed full at capacity as well. So what you see tonight in front of you is a building of those together will tell you that throughout this past week, I've been approached by other school systems and superintendents asking us to share the draft that you put together, and I've done that with them as well. And I've seen some emails that other school systems are taking our policy and tweaking it as well. So that's what we believe is a good policy. We believe it meets the test of the legislative act. I think there's going to be some discussion from the State Department on whether it does or not, but we feel comfortable in the people that we're talking to and the advice that we're getting that it does indeed meet the requirements of the legislative act.
So if I understand correctly, children from other parishes could attend our schools if it were an A, B, or C school. Do we have to provide transportation?
No, ma'am. We do not have to provide transportation. That was left out of it. There's a lot of checks and balances. You have to check the school that they're coming from, if it's a D or F, the one they're wanting to. And we had all that put into the bill, but we would not be required to provide transportation. That would be the responsibility of the students that is coming into our system.
And my last question is, does that take place immediately?
The bill says that you're supposed to get it done as soon as possible. We have had a handful of phone calls of people wanting to take advantage of this, and so far, we've told them that we don't have a policy in place yet. So after tonight, we'll certainly, if passed by this board, we'll start implementing the policy there as well. Ms. Heinz.
Is that it, Ms. Bellisario? Mr. Alfred had his hand up first. Mr. Alfred.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. My question on the policy is, on the last page, Section 8, "To make payment to the system amount equal to St. Tammany Parish school system local per pupil amount recognized in the MFP program for the year in which the student seeks to enroll, in proportion to the payment of the school year during which the student is enrolled in the system, and the appropriate level share of capital expenditures." I thought we're missing a part in that, it seemed like to me, that we're missing the $4,000 from our share that we put in for a student. A student, say, is $10,000. $6,000 is MFP. The other $4,000 look like it's missing.
No, sir. That's defined as the local share. It's in the wording. The MFP money is the money we would get from the state automatically because they'd be on our rolls, and then there's the MFP money, and then there's the construction money, debt service.
The second sentence... That's where I thought we were missing that.
And that's the same wording as last week.
The appropriate local share for capital expenditures. I see that part, but I don't see the other part.
In the second line, it says, "In an amount equal to the St. Tammany Parish Public School System local per pupil amount."
Recognized in the MFP.
Well, they give you a chart. No, they give you a chart. It shows MFP from the state, MFP local share. That's in the chart.
Okay.
They show both in that chart.
And I thought we were going to put some wording that that school district will have to agree that they're going to pay this.
Well, it does. The consent of the home school district.
And if we don't have the consent of the home school district, they are not coming to our...
They wouldn't be eligible for this policy.
That's the other part. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Darman.
Mr. Alfred had the same question I was regarding, was the funding mechanism within this.
Mr. Bentoncourt, did you have a question?
Same thing, Mr. Alfred. I just wanted to make sure Mr. Trey, I mean, Mr. Foles covered that.
Thank you. Were there any other questions from board members? Do we have any comments from the public? All in favor of adopting the draft policy for implementing Act 853 of 2014? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Thank you. Item 6 recommends acceptance of Folsom Elementary School Roofing Replacement of Administration Gym and Classrooms as substantially complete, subject to the architect's recommendations, submission of all regulatory requirements, and approval of Superintendent Foles, STPSB Project Number 1319.
Motion by Mr. Lue, a second by Mr. Jeter. Do we have any comments from the board? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Seven recommends acceptance of Lee Road Junior High Reroofing of the Cafeteria and Classroom Building as substantially complete, subject to the architect's recommendations, submission of all regulatory requirements, and approval of Superintendent Foles, STPSB Project Number 1320.
Moved by Mr. Lue, a second by Ms. Tipton. Do we have any comments from board members? Any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Eight recommends acceptance of Slidell Junior High Reroofing of Old Sixth Grade Wing as substantially complete, subject to architect's recommendations, submission of all regulatory requirements, and approval of Superintendent Foles, STPSB Project Number 1321.
Moved by Mr. Lamarck, a second by Mr. Alfred. Sorry. Do we have any comments from board members? Any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Nine recommends acceptance of Boyad Junior High Gym Floor Replacement as substantially complete, subject to architect's recommendations, submission of all regulatory requirements, and approval of Superintendent Foles, STPSB Project Number 1322.
Motion by Ms. Bellisario, a second from Mr. Alfred. Do we have any comments from board members? Any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Number 10 recommends acceptance of Slidell High School Classroom Wing Reroofing Phase II as substantially complete, subject to architect's recommendations, submission of all regulatory requirements... all regulatory requirements, and approval of Superintendent Foles, STPSB Project Number 1327.
Motion by Mr. Lamarck, a second by Mr. Womack. Do we have any comments from board members? Any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? So ordered.
Thank you. 11 recommends acceptance of Fountain Blue High School Phase I renovations as substantially complete, subject to architect's recommendations, submission of all regulatory requirements, and approval of Superintendent Foles, STPSB Project Number 1460.
Motion by Mr. Bettencourt, a second by Ms. Tipton. Do we have any comments from board members? Any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
12 recommends acceptance of Covington High School replacement of exterior doors as substantially complete, subject to architect's recommendations, submission of all regulatory requirements, and approval of Superintendent Foles, STPSB Project Number 1471, and I so move.
Motion by Mr. Dermond, a second by Mr. Loop. Do we have any comments from board members? Any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Number 13 recommends acceptance of low base bids and alternate number one submitted by CM Combs Construction LLC in the amount of $2,944,000 for the new classroom building at Madisonville Elementary, STPSB Project Number 1445.
We have a motion. Motion by Mr. Loop, a second by Ms. Sealy. Do we have any comments from board members? Any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
14 recommends acceptance of the bill, I'm sorry, the bid from Capital One Bank to act as fiscal agent for the St. Tammany School Board for the period of October 1, 2014 to September 30, 2017.
Motion by Mr. Womack, a second by Mr. Alfred. Do we have any comments from board members? Any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
15 recommends adoption of a resolution with respect to the municipality's continuing disclosure cooperative initiative of the Securities and Exchange Commission.
We have a motion.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Dermond, a second by Mr. Jeter. Any comments from board members? Ms. Bellisario.
I hate to be a pest, but I did miss last week's explanation. What is this exactly?
Terry, you can help me, as long as you don't correct me like you did the other day. No, just teasing. My understanding from Grants, this is a requirement, new requirement that's been put on as reporting all governmental agencies must make this disclosure as part of their renewals of bonds.
That's correct.
Very good, Terry. And Grant spoke to it last week, and first I was asking if it was just us, but it's been across the whole nationwide, and just the scheduling of this was going to be a nightmare, but it's a new requirement across the country for non-public governmental agencies.
Is that part of the Dodd-Frank Act?
It's related to it. It's just a requirement that entities report any deficiencies throughout the years on bond issues, which we don't have any, so, but you just have to report you do or don't.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from board members? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Ms. Heinz, that completes our report, but as you can see, we've been very busy this summer.
Yes, it was a very productive meeting. Thank you very much, Mr. Dermond.
Thank you.
All right, item H is our long-awaited back-to-school update. Mr. Foles.
First, I'd like to recommend acceptance of a new air conditioner. I just got the text that the motor is burned up. Fan motor's burned up.
As soon as she says adjourn.
As soon as adjourned, we'll have maintenance guys here getting it working and everything like that, so we'll give you, hopefully we'll have a good update on that as well. I gave you the big update on the back-to-school last week, but also today, just wanted, after one week, we're still doing well. Transportation issues, we're working hard on those, and I know Kathy and her group and Pete have been dealing with those as we go along. And we started with the pre-K and kindergarten today, and got a good report and a thumbs up from Beth Lane and others that are working on that, as well as Ms. Araby. So we're off to a great start. Our moving forward certainly has been a team effort, and as we mentioned, just want to thank everyone. And speaking of the team, I wanted you to see the picture that we took in our 24/7/365 T-shirts on the last day of our administrators' conference in Mandeville. And, you know, as you know, each year we've had a theme, as well as a T-shirt or a jersey that we took, and we get this put on the wall at the office, and it kind of reminds us of the team that we have, and it's a great group of people that are really, really working hard to do the best that they can for all the students in our school system. I'm certainly proud of each and every one of them and looking forward to a great year. We'll tell you that many of them have already went back to their schools and built on the theme of moving forward, whether it be with our slides, whether it be with our logo, whether it be, some of them even took the T-shirt and put their own school's name on that as well. Been getting pictures and selfie pictures and everything else from all the different schools and the things that they have going on. So all you have to do is plant a little seed, and we have administrators that run with it and bring it back to their school and have the buy-in from their school community as well. So I'm certainly proud of them as well. And as you know, the last couple of years, we've made it a point of showing a kid president video at many of our administrators' meetings. Kid President is the one that always is encouraging and telling everyone to be awesome. We had this grand idea of getting Kid President to come to our administrators' conference, but I think he's gotten too famous now, and so we went out in our own typical way and found our own kid president. And we found him and discovered him, Channel 13, Melody Meredith helped write a script. And I wanted to close tonight with our video on moving forward that we showed at the administrators' conference, and then we also have it on our website on the front of the website, and we've already got many hits on that. We've got many hits on our YouTube video. So if we could, I'd like to close the meeting with our moving forward video with our own kid president and other people acting, including this board, and we appreciate them for their acting ability and skills as well. And that's the closure for us, Ms. Heinz.
Thank you.
What does that mean?
It means racing to the finish line.
Does it mean running fast?
How about not going backwards?
Maybe moving forward is just about moving.
Moving your body.
Is that about standing still?
And accepting the status quo.
Is it using your brain? We all need to use our brains.
The moving forward says if everyone is moving forward.
Together.
Success takes care of itself.
Hmm, that sounds easy.
Intriguing.
Smart.
The moving forward was a smart dude.
My mom's smart. She drives a Ford.
Vroom, vroom, vroom.
The moving forward knew that we need to move forward.
In life.
In work.
In school.
In the classroom.
Even when we play.
We all gotta keep moving forward.
It takes courage.
It takes an open mind.
It takes a big heart.
Boom, 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 boom.
It takes endurance.
But it also takes people.
Like me.
And me.
And you.
And us.
So we gotta move forward.
Yeah, let's go!
Not like that.
The same direction.
But if we work together.
We can achieve success.
It's not always easy.
It's going to take all of us.
Because St. Tammany is huge.
Big, really big.
But we can do it.
Because we're a team!
And we spread that news everywhere.
And we connect it with the community.
Because we know how to work together.
Yes, we do!
For success.
Oh, man, can I take a nap now?
So now, drum roll, please.
We are moving forward, baby.
Yes!
Children.
That's me.
Community.
We're here for you.
Commitment.
That's what we need you for.
Are you in?
What about you?
How about it?
What are you waiting for?
Come on!
Do it for me.
And me.
And me.
Do it for us.
Because in St. Tammany Parish Public Schools...
We are moving forward.
And dancing, too.
I can't watch it enough. It's great. Thank you all. We now have an announcement. A public hearing will be held at CJ Shane Administrative Complex on Thursday, August 21 at 6:00 p.m. for the purpose of proposed budgets for fiscal year 2014-15. There being no further business, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you all for being here this evening.